Mayor Tom Hayden for your opening two-minute statement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I appreciate you allowing me to serve with town council for the last seven years. It's been my privilege. So as I've gone through this process, I've had the good fortune to serve under Mayor Melissa Northern, Mayor Jody Smith, and I've been mayor myself now for four years. During that time, I've been able to understand what the role is of the mayor of our town because it's unique to the council members, whereas the mayor doesn't have a vote. So as I've tried to understand what it is to do here, as I see the role of the mayor, is to set a vision for the town, a direction that we're going to go, and to achieve that direction and that vision. One of the things that I was back looking at what I read on in 2012 on my platform, this is one of the reasons why I think that I'm probably the most qualified person to serve as mayor of our town, is I do what I say. As I was looking at my platform, 90% of the things that I said we were going to accomplish has been accomplished. I'm very proud of that. So let's talk about what we need to do in the future. The things that are facing our town that we need to do in the future, probably one of the greatest problems facing our town is transportation. It will always be a problem because where we're situated in our town, we're at the bottom of a funnel of Denton County between two lakes. We're very fortunate to have Andy Eads and Bobby Mitchells, our county commissioners, because they've helped us dramatically bring in funding to help road projects. We need to continue to do that. The other thing we need to do is to continue to invest in our park system, as we've done. We've been building parks like crazy in Flowermount for the last four years. We need to build upon that. We've increased the trail system in Flowermount from 25 miles to 60 miles since I've been mayor. We need to build upon that. We need to double it again. Then the last thing we need to do is to pay for that. We've got to continue to diversify our tax base. We need to take the burden off the residents of Flowermount and help bring in the commercial aspect so that we can diversify our funding mechanism. And I'm very proud of the fact of things that we've accomplished since I've been mayor. The debt for the general fund of Flowermount has decreased. Did you tell me to stop? I was just getting horned up. Thank you very much. Here you go, Scott.
Thank you, John. John Deoe, Scott McAdoo.
Hi, good evening. I'm Julia Scott. My husband, John, and I share four children. We actually both grew up in Flowermount and we met in third grade. I've been here from the beginning when we were a rural country town of 275 people. I rode my horse all over Flowermount as a kid. In the early 80s, when I was in college, I could still hold up my hand and stop traffic on 2499 while I took my troop of kids across to go trail riding. I love the people here. I've made great friends through the years and I've seen so many positive changes. We, as a community, have worked to preserve what is special and unique about our town while we grew. I believe that we can have careful, thoughtful, quality development that will benefit all of us, not row houses that benefit a few. For 29 years, I've been working as a software engineer commuting to Dallas. I know what dense growth looks like, and it's not pretty, and I don't want it in my town. As mayor, I will guide us in the right direction.
Thank you. Second two-minute opening.
I don't think I need a microphone because my wife says I yell all the time. That's my normal speaking voice, okay? I've lived in Flowermount for 23 years. I love this town. I moved my children here from California with my grandchildren. I did that about 10 years ago because I thought this was the best place in the world to raise a family. I love this town greatly. What I don't like is that everything in this town is a special interest group. We have 65,000 people in this town, and I have an algorithm that I've written that cures all problems for anybody in everything. If you want it, I'll sell it to you. It's $1,000 a person. The algorithm that I do is I put numbers into the algorithm and it tells me what I need. It tells me, when I put it in, the numbers, that out of the 65,000 people that we have in Flowermount, 43,278 of them are smarter than me. The biggest problem with that is 10% of those people are under the age of 12, and that hurts my feelings. We don't need leadership from a mayor. We need a catalyst. We need a sponge that will get to as many of those 65,000 people as they can and figure out what direction they want to go. I know what I want. The town council knows what I want. I've been very clear over the last 10 years what I want for Flowermount. I have not spoken publicly about it. I have done it in a very private fashion. We have to stop catering to special interest groups in this town. They are too needy, and only 6%, 6% of our population voted in the last election. I want to get the other 95% in the thing. If I get 45% of the people in this town to vote, I win, even if I don't win.
Thank you. Brian Webb, your opening statement. Thank you. My voice does not carry nearly as well as Jim's. Brian Webb, I'm serving on Place Two, and I'm seeking to continue to do that. I'm married to my lovely wife Heather, soon to be 29 years, and I'm honored to have both of my daughters here tonight, Alex and Nicole. Thank you guys very much for coming. In 2012, I ran on a platform of, I want to grow the commercial tax base. And I want to do that along our commercial corridors. And the reason I wanted to do that is because there was a lot of things that we needed to do here in Flowermount, and we needed the money to do it. We've opened a senior center. We bought 20 acres on the west side of town for much-needed parks, practice fields. We discovered a hidden gem in our town last year, a 160-year-old log cabin. And because we have been growing our tax base, growing our sales tax revenues, we had financial wherewithal where we could buy that property. And it is now preserved. These are the things that you can do when you have a growing town, a growing tax base, and a fully engaged council. If you look around at the development that has taken place, it has all been done carefully. It has all been done thoughtfully, and it is all of high quality, because that is what our residents demand. That is what they want. That is what they expect, and that is what we have consistently delivered. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to the Flowermount Area Republican Club, and to wear for moderating, and for everyone in the audience for attending. My name is Sandy Fambro, and I'm running for Place Two in Flowermount Town Council. As many of you know, I was born and raised in Louisiana, which is why I have the Florida League on my campaign signs. I'm very proud of where I came from. I've moved back and forth to Texas. This is my third time. Now I keep coming back. I've enjoyed it a lot. The first time was to attend Austin College, Hupin Sherman. Currently, my husband and I live here in a house just behind Parker Square with our five, four-laded children, as I call them. I have a 27-year-old son who currently lives in Oklahoma, and he's learning to become an electrician. We bought our house here in Flowermount after setting a record with our realtor in the number of houses that we looked at in the area. We saw the house. We fell in love with it. It's one of the most unique houses, I think, in our neighborhood. We have a lot of trees in both the front and backyard. We have a nice pond with fish in the back. And across the street from us is a nice green belt where some of the trails end from behind Parker Square. So the view out my front window is a nice green space with squirrels playing and the birds and everything like that, and we really enjoy it, as the cats and dogs do as well, when they try to get outside to all the wildlife. I'm running because I think that town council members should listen to the voices of all residents. They don't have to agree with them, but they need to listen, and they need to listen in a very respectful manner. Thank you.
I follow Jim's lead. I don't think I need a microphone. It's a little bit of a burden. My name is Don McDaniel. It is my goal to earn your vote and seat. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you to the Flowermount Area Republicans Club, the Board of Directors, and all members for having us tonight. I love Flowermount. I've lived here for 16 years. I'm very proud to have raised my family in Flowermount. My two children, my daughter, who's a junior at Flowermount High School, and my son, who's in eighth grade at McCamey Middle School, where I served as PTA president in my second term. Flowermount means everything to me, as I know it does to many of you who live in town, because you chose to live there, just as I did, for various reasons. I think that Flowermount has forgotten its brand. We've gotten bogged down in talking about very divisive issues. How big should somebody else's house be? How big should their lot be? Should they be allowed to cut down a tree or not? What kind of business should they open? Do I like that business? We've forgotten to talk about what brought us to Flowermount. I'll bet you 95% of you that live in Flowermount that are in this room moved there for one reason or another regarding family, whether it was great schools, whether it was access to an airport that could get you to your business, whether it was a quick commute to a job that earned for your family, whether it was a safe place to live for all the amenities, you moved to Flowermount for the right family. If we can continue to have conversations about what's best for our families, I think all this other stuff will resolve itself. We don't have to be so striving in our ideals and in our opinions that we get bogged down in things that don't really benefit our families. I think the best way to serve families in Flowermount is to know their community. And the best way to know a community is to serve a community, and I have done that since I moved here. From serving on Plankton Zone currently, Transportation Commission prior to that, 12 years now in PTA, and currently as PTA president, I've served LISD on the Bond Oversight Committee and on numerous boards and panels. I love Flowermount, and I am looking forward to earning your votes tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Engle. I'm running for Flowermount Town Council, Place Four. I will use the mic tonight. I want to thank the Flowermount Republican Club for hosting tonight's event, and thank you for everybody in the audience to come out tonight. Since I don't have a background within the town of prior service, I'll give you some of my background. I'm a resident of Texas since 1983, resident of Flowermount since 2005. I have a bachelor's degree from Aquinas College in Business and Economics. My work background was, I was a, I'm a retired business leader. I retired three and a half years ago from HP. And I had 30-plus years of experience in management, working for companies such as American Airlines, Sabre, EDS, and HP. Primarily, they were in roles for supply chain management and operational roles. However, the last couple of years, I was in a account business management role as well. My wife and I have four children, and we have one grandchild. They all live within, in the area, but not necessarily in Flowermount. She's also a nurse for LISD, for those LISD people running, at Wellington Elementary. Currently, I am sitting on the Board of Adjustments and the Oil and Gas Appeals Board for the town of Flowermount. I believe in the town and its special uniqueness. Its uniqueness is what brought me to the town. In 2005, we have a gem in Flowermount. We're just minutes away from a major airport. We're between two highways. We're less than 30 miles away from both the cities of Dallas and Fort Worth. We've got Denton to the north. The town has high-quality building standards, areas of suburban feel as well as rural feel as well out in the Conservation District. With growth in the DFW metroplex, there will be much demand from developers, from projects here. And I want the town to grow, but I want it to grow the right way. Thank you.
Okay, Jason, where's your opening statement?
Good evening. I'm Jason Webb. I am not related to the gentleman. Couple of seats down from me. Always seem to preface that. I have more relation, I have just as much relation to Spud Webb as I have to Brian Webb. I'm running for Town Council, Place One, because I love my community. My wife and I moved here 14 years ago after I graduated from Southwestern Seminary to serve this community and to work with individuals. And it's because I love the people here that I've stayed here, that I've raised my family here, and that I'm now standing up to serve for Flowermount on the Town Council. We've seen a lot of things happen in the last 14 years. When we first moved here, we always had to go to Louisville to eat, to shop. We had to go to, down to Grapevine to find things. But in those 14 years, we've seen growth happen. We've seen houses built. We've seen businesses start. We've seen some succeed, some fail. But ultimately, we've seen Flowermount become better because of the people who are here, the people who sit at this table, who are standing up and serving our community. I serve our community right now on the Oil and Gas Board, as well as the Board of Adjustments. I should sit next to Jim. And it's a pleasure to serve in town government. But for 14 years, I've served the community by working with men and women and families to build up our community in churches. I've sat next to wives whose husbands have left them. I've sat next to mothers whose children are in the hospital. I've served our community by caring for the individuals. And by being on Town Council, I want us to continue to care for the individuals. What we've seen this last year in our Town Council has not reflected well the people of Flowermount. And I want to reflect the people of Flowermount by standing up with high standards for what we need to represent us. We need people, men and women of our community, who will uphold the high standards that we want for our businesses, we want for our houses, we want for our family. We ask for our children to rise up and be better than we are, but yet we allow our politics to be below where we are. I want to serve Flowermount because I want to serve the people of this city, of this town.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Strachan. Thank you for being here tonight to give each one of us the opportunity to speak with you. This election is not about me or any other candidate seeking your support. This election is about you, our residents, and what you want for our town now and in the future. I have lived in Flowermount for 23 years. I care about what happens to this town now and for many years to come. I'm not a politician, and I have no personal interests that will conflict with the issues that will be brought before the council for decision and resolution. Primary to my platform as your Town Council member is my responsibility to listen to you, the residents, your input and concerns regarding issues, and together with the information presented to the council, make a decision that is good for all parties concerned. I do not believe our residents are that far apart for the vision for our town. We all want good things for our town. The challenge comes in priorities. My first priority as your Town Council member is to protect the interests of our town, its residents, and first responders. Additionally, our seniors and veterans are important, and their specific needs should be a priority for town decisions. We need to be smart in the way we grow. Our master plan and smart growth were approved by you, the residents, so we can have and afford our top priorities. It's crucial we take them seriously. A change to those plans only, a change to those plans should only be made for the benefit of the town and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, before I begin the questioning, would you please give a round of applause to Sarah, who's a student at Marcus High School, and she's videotaping this tonight. All right, we begin the questioning with Tom Hayden. All right, what do you think the biggest challenge facing Flowermount is right now?
Well, there's a number of issues facing Flowermount. In the past, I've always thought it was the upper Trinity Water District and our increasing water bills. But the way that that's going to resolve itself is as the town grows, because right now we're subsidizing our bills. But really, the issue that I see that we have to address now is transportation. I think that is probably one of the greatest issues we have. While Flowermount is growing, we're only growing at a rate of 1% a year, while Denton County is growing at a rate of 3% a year. Regardless of what happens in Flowermount, again, we're at the bottom of the funnel. If we don't, and I didn't realize how hard it was until I started to go out to do it, to get funding to build roads. It takes years and years to get it accomplished. What we're going to see in 2025, we have to start planting the seeds now. We have to start addressing that, because in the next 10, 15, 20 years, Denton County is going to double in size, and if we don't address transportation, we're going to wake up one day, and it's, we're going to be stuck. Thank you very much.
So the same question to John Deoe Scott.
I wasn't, I had an idea of what the most pressing problem was, but I wanted to find out what other people thought, so I asked a lot of people. I asked around. And one of the common things that I heard was the residents had serious concern about the debt that was associated with the Riverwalk, and especially with the FBI investigation, and what the impact would be on our town. Are we going to be left holding the bag? And if so, what's in that bag? That's what I had heard as the most pressing problem.
Thank you. Same question for Jim Engle.
I think there are many pressing problems. I think when you walk out the door, if you're a resident of Flowermount, the first thing you should do when you go to your car, when you want to go to your sidewalk, you should gently flick, look up, and whoever your god is, say, "Thank you for putting me here, because I'm in the best place in the United States to live." And that isn't me that comes up. That's a lot of people. That's people, everybody who looked at the Wall Street Journal thing that come out a few years ago. Every time you turn around and you see the top places in America to live, we're in the top 10. We're in the top 25. We are, we are not entitled in Flowermount. We are blessed to live here. We don't have any, and that's the problem. We have 6% of the voters show over the last election. Why? Because we don't have any problems. Our town runs too good. We have employees that are fantastic. You see, I swear, I posted a thing on Facebook this winter, and there was these guys in there that were, their hands were bloody, and they were working in the, and they were happy having their job. But 80% of the town's employees couldn't afford to live in this town. They can't afford to live here. And people tell me, "Let him live in Carrollton or Louisville." I think there's issues that we have. None of them are big enough to cause us any, any loss of sleep at night, okay? And he's wagging his finger at me.
Thank you. Brian Webb, the same question.
What are the issues facing our town? Aging infrastructure on the east side, water lines, streets, roads, sewers. They're going to need to get fixed. It's going to take a big number. It's going to have, as Mr. Dixon likes it, it's going to have a couple of commas in it, and it's going to take a while to get it done. Good news is, we got a plan. We have a town staff who knows that plan, who put that plan together, and they are executing that plan. So that's our biggest pressing issue right now. Our biggest opportunity, if I've got a little bit more time, is what's going to happen on the far west side. At the intersections of 1171 and 377, and then as you go on out west to 35W, it's going to be a tremendous opportunity for our town. And with it's going to bring one additional challenge, and that is going to be making those residents and those businesses out there be a part of our town, be a part of Flowermount. So thank you.
I think for me, and in talking with residents, both before I decided to run and since, one of the challenges that I see is making sure that we retain what it is about this town that drew people here in the first place. I've talked to a number of people who've told me that when some event comes up, either children graduating from high school or a spouse retiring, they plan to leave, because it's changed so much since they've moved here. And I think we need to make sure that as we are developing, and we need to develop, we will develop, we're being respectful of the residents and their wants and what they need. Thank you.
Well, with a panel of this size, invariably, you're going to end up with some redundant answers, right? Tom gave a very good answer, I thought, so did Brian. I was going to say what Tom said, and I thought, well, maybe I should shift that a little bit, so I was going to say what Brian said, and now I'm stuck, right? So I do think, yeah, I do think that Brian hit the nail on the head. I think we have the potential to become an old part of town and a new part of town, the haves and the have-nots, the good side of the tracks and the bad side of the tracks. And I don't want that at Flowermount. I don't think anybody in this room wants that. And part of what we can do to ensure that that does not happen is to maintain the infrastructure on the east side of town. That older section of town has to be maintained. They have to have good roads. They have to have good facilities and services so that they are a continuing, vibrant, and productive, and contributory part of our town collectively. So my goal, the challenge I see going forward, is to make sure that we stay a cohesive town by addressing infrastructure issues on the east side of town. Thank you.
Don's right. We got so many people up here, so you're going to have very similar answers. Mine's going to be a little bit different, but I'm going to say that we do have aging infrastructure on the east side of town. We've also got expansion for infrastructure on the west side of town as we go move out that way for development purposes. We've got to keep up with both of those. And the town needs to pay for that and have those funds available. And a key way of being able to do that is to generate some commercial development and, you know, spread out our tax base. Thank you.
In the 90s, we had a big growth period up until around 2001, and then into that first decade of the 2000s where our housing had increased. And because of that, we're now sitting 20, 25 years after the first infrastructure was built on the east side, not the first, but as it's starting to age, it's starting to show that 30-years movement. I know the Highland Village Town Council's here today, but wouldn't it have been great if 407 had been completed and ready to go when shops at Highland Village were built? There's been a lot of traffic issues because of the infrastructure wasn't yet prepared. And so I believe that we need to look at our infrastructure so that we can face the next decade and the next 30 years, so we can be prepared as a whole city to meet the traffic needs, because when you're sitting in traffic, you're not with your family. And you moved to Flowermount to be with your family. And so I look at that as one of the major issues facing us.
Well, I'm the last one, so while I agree with some, I think our biggest challenge is, again, setting priorities. I don't think the residents are being listened to. I think that our tax dollars are being used for developers' profit instead of taxpayer wants and needs. I think we need to reset our priorities, go back to the Flowermount that most people moved here for, and use our tax dollars to benefit the residents and not profits for developers.
With John Deoe Scott, and the question is, what do you think about the property tax rates in Flowermount?
Being a landowner, I think that they are a little high, but it's the price that we pay for demanding quality. And we certainly, I completely agree with Jim, that we do need to continue to grow our tax base, and that we can only do that through growth. And, but at some point, we have to consider what's consider what's going to happen when we run out of land to develop on.
Thank you. Jim Barren, same question.
Sure. What do you think about the property tax rates in Flowermount?
Not high. I know that this is a terrible thing to say in a red room. This is a red room, okay? I am as purple as you're ever going to find in individual. I am a conservative, conservative, that's what I call myself. Okay? If you want to live someplace and you want it to be something, then you can't not pay your way. We need to pay our way. I would prefer to pay more, not less. I want this to be the best possible town it can be. And people are worrying about whether they're going to pay money. There are seniors in Discount who have a beautiful senior citizen center, by the same token, are saying, "Why should we pay for LISD taxes when our children are not going to school?" It's because you got the opportunity to educate your children, and now you want to abdicate the responsibility to educate future. It's pennies. Another $1,000 isn't going to kill anybody in this room, but it would add $6.5 million to our tax revenue.
Question again, uh, sure. What do you think about the property tax rates in Flowermount?
I, along with the rest of the council, had got to do something that hadn't been done in decades. I got to vote to lower the tax rate. I think the tax rate's about right for right now. Until we can grow that commercial tax base a little bit further, add some more sales tax revenues in, grow the pie, and lower the tax rate again. Couple points. Tax rate and your tax bill, they're completely different. My tax bill, it's probably $12,000 a year, something like that. I'm guessing, somebody can check the tax rolls for me. I'm guessing that's about the same as Ms. Scott's. It might be a little bit higher. She's got a large ag exemption. That's okay. She's got ag property. We enjoy that. Tax bills are different than tax rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Fambro.
I think the mic's on now. I think that's something that we do have to look at constantly to make sure it's where it needs to be. Everybody wants lower taxes except maybe Jim. But we want to make sure that it is enough to cover our services. We want to attract good people to work for our town. We've got a great town staff now. We want to keep it that way. We want to make sure that we're getting good people to work as our first responders. Do we have enough? We want to make sure that we do have enough as we continue to grow. I, living in Louisiana, we had a state income tax. So, I've lived in a state with a state income tax and I've lived in a state without one. Bottom line is, you pay one way or another. If it's property tax, if it's a state sales tax, if it's sales tax, excuse me, if it's a state income tax, or it's a sales tax, you're going to have to pay for your services one way or another. So, I think it's just something we need to look at to make sure we're getting the quality that residents deserve.
Thank you. Same question.
By any objective measure, our tax rate is just about perfect. Look at our bond rate, look at our credit rate, look at the services and goods that we provide to our citizens. Look at our citizen surveys and their satisfaction with their town government. Look at our accolades we receive for fire and police protection. Look at our response times, look at our insurance rating. It directly impacts the insurance rates that you pay for your homeowner's insurance. By any objective measure, our tax rate is exactly where it should be.
You know, 10 years ago, or 11 years ago when I moved to town, my tax rate in my own community for the actual city tax was 10% higher than what we're paying today. So, by that mean, from what we're getting here to what I got there, I think it's a bargain. If you look at the other communities around us, we are a bargain. And we need the tax rate to pay off the obligations of the town right now, provide the services that the town residents want. And so, I would say, yeah, I'd like it to be lower, but at the same point, I think we're at a good balance right now.
Ladies and gentlemen, I was asked if you would hold your applause until the final so we can go through this more quickly. Thank you. The next one would be Jason Webb.
I think I agree with most of the candidates up here that our tax rate is exactly where it needs to be. I was happy to see the percentage decrease. And one of the reasons that are, that you might feel that your taxes are continuing to increase is because your house has been desirable. People, more people want to move here, so therefore, your investment in the house has been increased. I'm also very proud to say that our, our commercial base has increased, so the burden on residents of Flowermount has been decreased because our commercial businesses are paying that extra, so we're able to lower our tax rate. And I'd like, you know, I agree that we need to set where we're at right now, let this tax rate go for a while, and see if it's possible to lower it again. I would definitely love to have a 0% tax rate, but that's not, that's not feasible. And so, let's, let's keep it reasonable, let's pay for the services that we need like fire and police and for town staff and for parks. And I believe that right now, our tax rate is right where it needs to be.
Thank you. Kathy Pressler, please.
I agree. I think our tax rate is good, and I was excited when it went down. I think sometimes I've been, well, I've been explaining to residents a little because they're complaining about their tax bills and they don't realize that the value of their home is going up. I think our value of our property, we really need to keep an eye on, and it depends on how we build, how our property value goes up. I don't want to see us increase at such a quick rate that if there is a bubble or if there is a problem, then it all explodes in our face.
Thank you. Same question with Tom Hager.
So, as Brian Webb said, I was very excited to be the mayor of the town, but it's the first time lowering our tax rate in almost 25 years. And as I hear everybody talking about what we need to do, it's what we have been doing for the last four years. 6,000 jobs have come to Flowermount since I was elected mayor. We are going to announce in the next couple of months, probably another 2,000 jobs that come to Flowermount. We have been able to, to increase our commercial base so that we're able to maintain our sales tax revenue in our town. Sales tax revenues since 2012 are up 35%. All the things I hear talking about that we need to work on our infrastructure, we need to do those things, we have to figure out a way to pay for it, and the way we're paying for it is doing exactly what we're doing. We're increasing the options for our residents to go out and do things, and we're, and we're keeping our resources in the town of Flowermount. And I'm very excited to be mayor of probably one of the most vibrant economic explosions that's happened in Flowermount since we've been a community. And we're just getting started. We're going to continue to find the balance between our town and maintain rural character, but we're going to bring commerce to our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. For the next round of questions, we're going to begin with Jim Barren. The question is, in your opinion, has the Riverwalk delivered what promised?
Will it deliver? I don't know. I'm hoping, I have a greater interest in the Riverwalk than anybody in this room because I live in a slum of Flowermount.
I do too.
I live in Prairie Creek subdivision. My house last year was worth $165,000. It's worth $210,000 now and probably will be worth $280,000 by the time the Riverwalk opens. He's trying to electronically intercede. So, the reality is, is that the Riverwalk, I think, is going to be a great thing for this town. I think it's going to bring people in here. When Grandma and Grandpa come to visit, they don't have to stay in Lewisville or Grapevine or, or we don't have to feel obligated to put them into that colossal, great big white thing that's on the, what do they call it?
Gaylord.
Gaylord. So, we're going to save money, okay? Because what does it do to your courtyard? When you keep doing that, I think you're telling me I've got one minute. This is it. Now I got.
Okay. Brian Webb, your same.
The Riverwalk? I'm not happy where we're at right now. I thought we would be further along. Do I think it's going to be a failure or absolutely not? Somebody raised a red herring earlier tonight saying they're hearing from residents, or maybe it's one resident who's got concerns about the bid. I have no worries about the bid debt. The people who we need to be worried about the bid debt are the folks who owe it. The town of Flowermount doesn't owe it. And the folks who it's owed too. And the town of Flowermount is not owed any of that money either. So, I was pleased to see they took a delivery late last week of infrastructure materials for the east side. I'm not sure where that's going. My guess is it's probably working with the hotel area, but they're working at it. And we will stay on them, and we will maintain focus and make sure that we get what we want, which is that restaurant, rowing that commercial district. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Fambro.
I think the Riverwalk started out with great potential. Unfortunately, it seems to have gone through a number of revisions, so it's not what it started out to be. I think the hotel is a great idea. There is not anything in that part of town or anywhere close to it in the neighboring communities. But I'm concerned that the Riverwalk has been overpromised and underdelivered.
I disagree with Sussman. I think the Riverwalk is going to be fantastic. Has it met my expectations? Not yet, but it will. But I can tell you one thing that it has done that I am very grateful for. It has replaced, the plan as it exists now, the previous plan, which was over 5,000 apartments. Right now, it's capped at 1,600 apartments. The old plan was replaced with what we have working now. So, am I satisfied with where it is now? No, but I will be. I can be patient. I'm like a kid waiting for Christmas. My kids are always anxious in the window when Hanukkah's going to be here. Your kids are probably anxious for Christmas. They have to wait. We'll wait, and it'll be great.
So, I have to say that, disappointed in the progress that they've made so far. It seems what we've seen so far is the high-density housing on the east side, and there is some infrastructure going in, but it seems like we see a lot of presentations from the developer, but I really want to see some building that, of the amenities and what were been offered. Sandy made a comment about the hotel. And then I got married three years ago, and the closest hotel was Lewisville. You know, that was just not right. So, anyways, I'm disappointed, but I'm hopeful that they'll finish it out and it'll be up to our expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Webb.
I'd agree. I'd agree the Riverwalk has not delivered what it's promised yet. My daughter has promised to take care of me when I'm older, and she has not delivered on that promise yet. She's 14, so maybe 50 years from now, but hopefully, the Riverwalk doesn't take 50 years. But I think the promise of the Riverwalk is a promise that Flowermount needs, a hotel, a high-quality hotel, of more restaurants, some restaurants to increase in commercial business, retail business. So, I'm hopeful that it will, just as my daughter will, deliver on the promise.
Well, I think the question was, have they delivered what they promised?
In your opinion, has the Riverwalk delivered what promised?
Absolutely not. They promised certain things, I don't know how many years ago, and it's gone through several revisions. Now, we have less commercial, more residential. I don't know how we call it a commercial development. It was supposed to have an amphitheater, it was supposed to have restaurants. And last I heard, I think there's three restaurants and they're having a hard time attracting them. Now, will the Riverwalk succeed? That's a different question, and I hope it does succeed. I want it to succeed. But have they delivered what they promised? Not even close.
Thank you. Tom Hager.
So, one of the things we have to do is we need to be a cheerleader for our town and not somebody that throws rocks. And as I hear what's happening, as I'm reading what's happening here, people that are uninformed don't know what's happening with the Riverwalk. So, we need to take $10 million that's been spent. So, before you build a house, you have to build a foundation. $10 million has been spent so far in sewer, water, paving, and drainage. $5 million has been so far, been spent on the river. This year, there will be $3.5 million spent on the chapel, $3.5 million spent on the amphitheater, $5 million on the parking garage. The river right now can run. The reason it's not running is because they have to put the bridges in before they, they flip the switch. It's been ready to go for two or three months. In the next two weeks, you're going to see cranes coming in to complete the bridges. In the next couple of weeks, you're going to see 2,000 trees planted at the Riverwalk. Think about that, 2,000 trees in force in the Riverwalk area. They've already broke ground for the restaurants. It's not two or three restaurants, it's actually 13 restaurants that are going to be there. They've only announced about five of the restaurants, but the restaurants' roads are going to be there, beautiful balcony overlooking the river, and they've already started breaking ground, and they're our first hotels to be there.
Thank you, Tom. That's a shot. John B. Scott.
Again, I think the question was, has it met our expectations? Absolutely not. I really, I was one of those. I wanted it to succeed. It will succeed. I feel sure it will. However, that infrastructure that was promised in 2013 has not been seen. And in fact, some of the businesses, restaurants, and shops that were also promised were replaced recently by more row houses. I have to say, my daughter hadn't seen all the apartments when, in a while, and she drove by on the way here and she said, "Oh my God, what happened?" It was shocking. I, you know, I'm glad that we're going to be planting trees. What I really wish is that we had saved those 36, 40-inch postos that were there. We wouldn't be having to replace them if we had some character. It's just rows of apartments up to the street. That's not what we do.
All right. For the next question, we'll begin with Brian Webb, and that is, should the tree ordinance apply to single-family homes?
I need some clarification on that.
Yeah, so do I.
So, if you don't have it, then I get to clarify it myself because I have the mic. Our tree ordinance applies to residential development. I think what the question was, should it apply to the individual homeowner, such as I have a tree in my backyard and I want it, I want to take it down? Should I have to go to the town hall to get a permit? If that's the question, yeah, no. It's my tree. If I want to plant trees, I can plant them on my yard. If I want to take one down, I'll take one down. And if anybody wants to come help me, I've got two dead ones that I need some help with. But while we're on top of the trees and we have a very strong tree ordinance, and it was recently made stronger, and I'll come back to that later.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Sandy Fambro, please.
Yeah, I think the question's a little vague, so...
Well, why don't we, why don't we address the question the way Brian just did? If it's a tree on your property, how do you think you should have the right to cut it down without asking permission from the town?
Absolutely.
Okay. Next would be Dr. K.
I agree with that, absolutely. You have the right to your papers with your property, and that's your tree. If you need to take it down for whatever reason, it's yours. Do so.
Okay. Jim Nagel?
I agree. If you're a homeowner and you need to take down a tree, I had to take one down about six years ago because it was going to affect my foundation. So, I cut a tree down, but I repl-...
So, I cut a tree down, but I replanted it as well, so.
Okay, let's do it this way. Is there anybody that is opposed to that?
I don't want to.
Okay. Then we'll go in turn, Mr. Webb. Jason Webb.
I thought we were skipping the question. Yeah, I have six trees on my property. One of them fell down. It's a beautiful majestic pear. So luckily though, my daughter at her school was given on Arbor Day, a sapling. And we planted that sapling in its place. And so, I think that as a town, having a tree farm would be an excellent idea for residents to be able to replace trees that they want to replace or to put in new trees into their property.
Thank you. Kathy Strathman.
I agree. It's your property, your tree. You don't need to ask the town permission. And thank you all to Bowman for strengthening and saving our trees.
Thank you. Tom Hayden, please.
So, I just want to make sure that we heard my opponent said. My opponent said that we should not allow the trees to be cut down at the Riverwalk. You know, telling people that you can't cut down your own trees is not the answer. The answer is planting more trees. For every one tree we take down, we need to plant two. Trees are renewable resource. That's the answer to our situation with trees. And one of the things, and Brian Webb and I, we're right at the forefront of doing this. We are making more strength to our tree ordinance. ECC came back and recommended certain mitigation requirements for postos. Brian and I told them that wasn't good enough. We need to go back. We need to make it stronger. And again, encouraging the tree farm so that we can encourage our residents to get them involved to plant trees. That's the answer to our town. We need to continue to plant trees, just like Bob Rudisil did when he first moved here 60, 70 years ago. As well as Ronnie Hillier, who's in the audience. Those two gentlemen are more for planting trees in our town than anybody. And we need to take their lead and continue to plant trees. That's the answer to saving trees in Flowermount. Thank you.
Oh man, okay. Where do I start? First of all, to answer your question, absolutely. It is, the homeowner's right. It's their tree, absolutely. Cut it down. First of all, to answer Brian, the tree ordinance was repaired after it had been removed. It was repaired. What you replaced, the way of the strengthening of the tree ordinance was because it was repaired. It was removed years ago. The ability for a developer to remove all the trees if they wanted with no mitigation. That was repaired and added back. To answer the, replacing trees with saplings. Yeah, okay, in 300 years, you might be able to replace a post oak that was removed in the Riverwalk. 300 years, absolutely. Replace it. Again, Bob Rudisil, absolutely, he said that. He was a tree nursery man. He sold trees. Of course, that's what he's going to say. We need to save the treasures. We need to save the treasures and build around the trees like our master plan calls for. If we increase our density, absolutely, there's no choice. But if we maintain the master plan, we can build around the trees.
Jim Allen.
I wanted to mention Almog. Because he and I have a plan. We're both trying to get rid of our wives. We're going to move in together. I said it out loud. That's one of our treasures. One of our treasures in our town is Almog. Thirty-some odd years, he has been the protector of Flowermount. And here's what I have a problem with in town. I have a problem with, not so much with cutting down the trees or keeping the trees or whatever it is. How about the things that we're actually putting up, like fences? I know it's a segue, but the trees are trees. I believe that if you have a post oak in your front yard and it's this big around, there should be some protection for that post oak. Because it's just not yours, it's ours. I mean, it took 100 years for that tree to be that big. But I think for the smaller trees and the Bradford pears, I agree. It keeps crashing down on my fence. But I like to talk about fences.
Okay, we're going to go for the last question before closings and go through this quickly and hopefully. This would start with Sandy Fambo. The question is, would you support any changes to the public participation process at town hall?
Yes, absolutely. I think what we have now is not clear-cut. I like things that are very set and understandable for people and that can't be a moving target. I think that we need to require public participation cards to be filled out for all residents and turned in. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. It needs to be uniform every single meeting so the residents know what to expect. I think speakers should be called in the order in which they turn the cards in. And they need to be kept two to three minutes when it...
Ray Don McGan.
No.
Jim Engel.
Being a frequent public speaker at the planning zoning in town hall, I, seems to be working pretty well for me, so.
Now, Jason Webb.
I agree. The participation is important, that residents have a chance to voice their opinion. I don't see that there's a major problem with the order of people, the amount of time given to people. We need to have three minutes. As it stated, we need a level playing ground. I don't have a problem with if someone hadn't filled out a card that they were able to participate. Don't we want that participation to happen during town council? So, I believe that our town council needs to be able to listen to the residents in those moments before they make a decision. And so, I think that our current situation on public participation is working out just fine.
Thank you. Kathy Strathman.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a problem with public participation as long as the rules and everything apply to everyone fairly. I don't think that there's a problem.
Thank you. Tom Hayden.
I can't believe we're talking about this. I can't believe whether anybody talks three minutes or three and a half minutes is an issue we're discussing. But let me tell you, this is my responsibility as mayor, as chair of the meeting. This is my role. If somebody is sitting in the meeting, well, first of all, for public participation, you fill out a card. For public hearings, not necessarily if you're sitting there, I just ask people, "Hey, come on up." If you've been, if we have 20 people that want to speak, I'm going to cut people off at three minutes. If we have three people that want to speak and they've been sitting there for four or five hours to 11 o'clock at night and somebody wants to speak three and a half minutes. Everybody keeps talking about, "Let's hear our residents. Let's listen to our residents." If someone wants to talk for three and a half minutes instead of three minutes and there's three people there, I'm going to let them speak. Because I want to hear what they say. I'm not going to cut them off. Now, that being said though, I've also considered that if we have 30 or 40 people speaking that night, I may start saying, "You only have two minutes to speak tonight." Because we need to get through this. But I'm going to set it up at the very beginning, say, "Everybody, we have two minutes tonight." But it's my call to see what we're doing. And I'm going to continue to use discretion, but I'm going to listen to our residents as best as my ability.
Thank you.
I agree that there should be a little flexibility in a few situations, like, you know, 11 o'clock at night, I get that. When there are 40 people that want to speak, those 40 people should be able to speak and we shouldn't be cutting off any cards. And I think the only other thing I would add is, when there are pooled minutes, which I absolutely appreciate and I've used that before, is that each person who donated their time should be there and those names should be called. Because that's the only thing that I've seen that might be slightly unfair.
Thank you. Jim Lurin.
No comment.
Okay, Brian Webb, that's moving along. Brian Webb. This is a question looking for a problem. The mayor has flexibility. He exercises that flexibility. There are times when I think that he's been too lenient. And there's times when I think he's been too lax. Probably a good indicator that he's nailing it in the middle pretty well. So, his job. Thank you. Okay, the two-minute closings will begin in reverse order with Kathy Strathman, please.
Once again, thank you for being here this evening and taking an active interest in our town and its future. Also, I want to give a special thank you to my husband Jeff for supporting me in this decision to seek this seat on town council, even though he knows it will add nearly 70,000 friends and neighbors to our family. Those of you who know me know that I take my oath and word very seriously. If anyone's, if any person's word cannot be trusted, then how can he or she be trusted to act in our best interest? I sincerely want the best for our town. We deserve quality versus quantity. My platform includes keeping the charm and beauty, the trees and parks, green space and trails, the native plants, flowers and wildlife that attracted and influenced so many of us to make Flowermount our home. Though each of us is unique, I believe we can work together with mutual respect. As your town council member, I will make informed decisions regarding issues before the town council based on your input and the laws that govern our town. I'm Kathy Strathman, candidate for your town council place one. I hope my platform and promise is something that you can support. Please join me. Let's roll up our sleeves. Let's come together. Let's make Flowermount the best place it can be, not just for now, but in the future.
Thank you.
I believe, I didn't turn it on. I believe that I'm uniquely qualified for this point in time to be a council member for Flowermount. I've been working for 14 years to bring people together and connect people to this community. I've been a bridge builder between many different opinions. I'll listen to all sides. I'll care about all people in Flowermount. I have a little more of my background. I have a bachelor's of arts in government from the University of Texas. I understand government. I've not used that degree. Because I went on to Southwestern Seminary so I could work with individuals instead of with large groups. But at such a time as this, it's where Flowermount is at right now. I believe I am the person who can bring our town together and to move us past the divisiveness of the past. And so, I, again, I'm Jason Webb and I ask for your vote for town council place one.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks again for everybody for coming out. I want to say that I believe in a balanced approach to development in reviewing each development project based upon what it brings to town and what the impacts are. Contrary to what some may believe, I'm not against all master plan amendments. If it makes sense or if compelling reasons, I'll consider master plan changes. However, I don't believe that developers should be granted every request just because they do it to maximize their profits. I commit to the towns' residents that I will represent to be responsible to all residents and also treat fellow council members with mutual respect. I ask for your vote and for your support. Thank you.
My name is Don McDaniel. I hope I've earned your vote tonight for Flowermount Town Council place four. Thinking about what it takes to be a leader and a volunteer in our town, I think it takes coalition building. And thinking about that as I'm sitting up here. And I look at my table of friends and guests that came with me tonight. I've got two families that I know for sure are Democrats and active in this county. I've got a teacher. I've got a head librarian, a former LISB trustee. I've got the guy who beat me last year for the town council seat that I was running. I'm sorry, I'm sitting next to my wife, but... I've got a guy, a vet, and there's several vets on my table. But a guy who is so conservative that he makes me look like a Roosevelt. I look around the room and I know my supporters in this room. And I look at you and there's people that have lived in town since before it was a town. People that have just moved to Flowermount. I have coalition, I have relationships across every spectrum in Flowermount. And that's because of the time and effort that I have given to our community. That is the fruit of my labor is the relationships that I have. And I promise you that I will work with those relationships to make our town a continuing better place to live for all of us. My name's Don McDaniel and I ask you for your vote for Flowermount Town Council place four. Thank you.
Sandy Fambo.
Again, thank you to the Flowermount Area Republican Club, Bob, for moderating and everyone for being here. I'm sure everyone's tired, it's been a long evening, so I'll keep it short. I have no hidden agenda. And the only promise I make is to listen and treat all residents with respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, thank you. You've done a great job tonight. Thank you to the audience, Flowermount Area Republican Club. It's always a pleasure. I want to leave tonight with probably giving you the clearest statement I can for why I'm seeking your support. And part of that is thinking back on where we are as a town, right now. And I believe that right now, we are in an excellent place for the town of Flowermount. And I think tomorrow it's going to be better. And a big part of that reason why tomorrow will be better than today and better than four years ago, is our town manager, Jimmy Stathatos. And his staff and those town employees. There is a person asking for your vote tonight who six months ago called for him to be fired on social media. There are two additional people who were also on that comment thread and they didn't argue. I stand for you tonight with the endorsement of the men and women of Flowermount's police and fire associations. I'm humbled to have that. I'm proud to have their backs because they have ours. I, along with the rest of the councils that I've served with, have used your tax dollars responsibly, adding amenities and reducing your tax rate. But there are still some things that we need to do. We need to expand our library. We need a new town hall. I believe we can do those things and we can do them together. Thank you very much. My name is Brian Webb. I'm running for reelection to place two. And I would be honored to have your vote.
I'm probably the only guest in this room that, I've been sitting up here, that's not going to ask for your vote. I'm going to ask for you to look at what I put out there in the next 45 days, which is going to be all subjective things, okay? I'm not going to tell you what a wonderful person I am. I'm not going to tell you my relationship with my God. Because that's my own personal relationship. I'm not going to tell you not to vote for anybody else. I'm just going to tell you to look at the objective things that I'm going to put out there. There will be nothing that I will say subjectively. I will tell you now, if you want to vote for somebody who's a great father, who's a great son, who's a great person overall, vote for Tom Hayden. If you want to vote for somebody who's a lot prettier than me, vote for Tom Hayden. What I am is I am a person who is going to be the steward. I've spent all my life with other people's money. I have the capability of approving million-dollar transactions for top 50 fortune companies. I have done things with other people's money and that's the way that I will look at the town. I will make sure that there is total transparency in this town when it comes to how we're spending the town's money. Special interest groups, again, I will make sure that everybody in this town gets a fair share, at least as much as I can. Because as Tom said, we don't get a vote. The three people here don't get a vote. It's the rest of the people on here that you're going to have to worry about. All you have to do is worry about how long. One of the three of us lets people yammer on without saying your three minutes are on.
Thank you. Andy Scott.
I love my town. I hope that that's clear. I love all the people in it. I'm here for the long haul. My children are staying here. My grandchildren are staying here. Our residents deserve that we keep the promises that we made to them when they bought their homes in a master plan community. They believe that vision statement... They believe that vision statement that's written in our master planned document that says that our leaders will preserve the country atmosphere, and they would not see our cross-timbered forest flattened and our grasslands covered in concrete for a bunch of row houses. They believed smart growth would protect them from overbuilding, crowded schools, and awful traffic. Big money broke that promise. As mayor, along with a great council, I want to restore that confidence and do what we promised.
Thank you.
So Jim has nailed it a couple of times tonight. But earlier tonight, he said, "Our town runs too well," and he's correct. And I'm very proud to be part of that for the last seven years. I'm very proud to be part of what we're accomplishing and what we're doing. As Brian Webb said, I'm very proud to be recognized and endorsed by the associations or police and fire departments. And not only, before, I even had a candidate. They said, "Tom, we want you to run again for mayor. We're asking you." But this represents 25% of our workforce. These are the people that watch what's happening in our town. They asked, "Tom, we need you to run for mayor again." I treasure that endorsement, and I appreciate the confidence that they've given me. And as John V. Erv said, we need to do, we need to honor our promises. Again, in 2012, 90% of the things I've accomplished, I said I was going to do in 2012. I'm a man who does what he says, and I'm going to continue to do that. The other thing I've learned tonight is we need to listen to our residents. Few people in this room have visited as many homes as I have in the seven years I've served in council. I started something called Mornings with the Mayor. The first Saturday every month, I have between a dozen and 60 residents will come see me to talk about concerns, problems, what's happening with the town. I'm out there, I'm accessible, and I'm going to continue to do that, because, again, I work for the people. You know, I volunteer my time, but I'm here to work for the people that elected me. So again, thank you very much, and I look forward to continue serving as your mayor. Thanks again, everybody, for coming tonight. Appreciate it.